All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the 12th Board of Education meeting, January fourth, two thousand and sixty five. We need to go off and hold out for a week, hold snap, and New Year starts. So excited about that, got a lot going on. Thank you all for your dedication. Take attention, will you?
Sure. Anthony Amato. Valerie Anderson, here. Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Caba.
Here.
Rebecca Ivan, I'm in here. Michelle Bora, here. Emily Hibber, here. James Richfield.
Yes.
Jennifer Cody, here. Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Peter Tagman.
Here.
Sidney Warble.
Here.
All right, thank you. We're all here except Anthony. And I don't expect him to be able to. Opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Certainly, you want to address this. All right, so you know when we move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone else want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Which can be present as of December seventh, Business Week. All right, the consent agenda is approved. The board of the chair. I did want to second to congratulations on the boys and girls. Best of the season, new student, their holiday tournaments.
So great.
Yeah. Great, impressive, glad that they're, you know, they're competing with them. But it's a small school, we have to do this very proud. You know, a lot of those sports. And that's a happy sight for the new year. And hope to see some good things every year. That's all I have. Moving on to agenda five, supervisor.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. I hope you saw them all. Really very excited about it. The kids were thrilled, the staff was thrilled. Wonderful improvement. We still have work to continue to get some more furniture. We have to get our pictures up. We are going to have at the facilities. Excuse me. At the facilities committee, we are inviting the gentleman who does the living walls. So that you can hear about that. And we're really excited about it. I mean, the kids were thrilled. Living walls are like a plant walls.
Yeah, they're awesome.
There's a parent who has a business. So we're really excited about it. Oh, excuse me, I just have a frog. Not gonna go away.
Can I have a drink?
Okay, so I sent you in the, that Vincent Cosentino was hired as a parent.
Who?
I didn't think it was front page news, but it must have been a slow news day. I did not admire him. He's hired by Mrs. O'Hara. We are very low on subs, as you know. He was subbing, he got very high reviews from some of the teachers. He was subbing in, we needed a one-on-one, and so he was hired. And so that's why he's there. Kathy Colella also called me today saying, oh, my gosh, where's it been, in the paper? She just had foot surgery, as did Sandy DeBella. So that's why they are not there, and I'm only saying this because it was in the paper. And then we had a resignation of Ron Decker and Alyssa Wazell. So, you know, some changes here and there, but, you know, we work to have a smooth transition.
I was just curious, what constitutes a leave of absence versus someone just taking some sick time? Like, it's foot surgery.
Leave of absence is a longer period of time.
But what's longer? I mean, those are relatively short, considering there's a break in there.
Bob, do you want to address that?
It's. We have to put them on.
FMIL.
Family medical leave. And it's part of, because they're over three days. This, most time, you never see anything.
Yeah.
But when they're longer periods of time, they go on FMI.
So anything over three days? It's just weird, you know, like, somebody's, if somebody was out for a week because they're sick, and it goes on the agenda as a leave of absence, it sounds like.
Family medical leave because you're allowed so many weeks in a year. We have to treat everybody consistently.
Okay.
Leave of absence are usually people who also ask us for leave of absence. Like, if somebody's absent for four or five days and it's after the fact and they're sick, we don't normally put it for leave of absence.
Okay.
But these were all, like, they were having planned surgery.
Okay.
So that's kind of what happened. And everyone's doing well.
Good.
So, and I have been spending a lot of time at Booth Free in Burnham. And this is Colella's absence, and it's been a delight.
Mrs. Colella and Mrs. DeBella.
Yes.
Colella and DeBella.
Yes, and we have someone else out for foot surgery too. We have a lot of.
Last one we had was two. It's not green.
I don't know, but that's what it is. So as part of my report, we're going to have Mrs. O'Hara, who led a committee, which we said we would have, to just look at reach and to share their recommendations. So, Ally, please.
Okay, so, Mrs. Westcott is passing out all the paperwork that accompanies the work that we did. A reach committee met and had some discussions and did some research around local preschools and made some recommendations based on our discussions and our research. The committee recommended an increased tuition. I know that was a conversation point last year. There is supporting data behind the front page, but the front page is our recommendations. We're gonna, we'd like to move the half-day fee from six hundred dollars for the year to nine hundred dollars for the year, and the extended day fee from a thousand dollars for the year to fifteen hundred for the year. The committee that met didn't feel like recommending a change in the current transportation plan for the program. We didn't want to add any additional cost for that in the moment, and I'll explain that as we go a little further. And we also did not recommend a change in the location of the program. Some of the, you know, reach is our comprehensive preschool program that builds a strong foundation for learning in our students, and it definitely attracts people to this region. I have had more than one conversation with families who are considering moving in because of the reach program. These recommend, and we've actually had visits from families out of town looking to move into district because of the program. And these recommendations that we made are, you know, are made in the best interest of our students and, you know, for the following reasons. When meeting with the preschool team, the idea of the flexible support that we have by having all three teachers present in one building. Oftentimes, I'm using Anne or Anthony or Jill to support me in another environment. So we do have requirements and obligations in the private schools to do assessments, to do observations and such. And so sometimes Anne, Anthony, or Jill will need to accompany me to a location to do that work, in which case we are flexibly, the other two teachers flexibly support that classroom. The shared materials, and I think when you think of materials, you think like older classrooms, where the materials stay in your room all year. What happens in our preschool classrooms is there's certain centers are set up or play areas, and then after a few weeks, they are moved to another preschool classroom, and new materials come in and circulate just to increase creativity, play skills, and such. So the idea of the shared materials and the location all being the same are important. The shared experiences that all the students have in one building right now, with town meetings, events, scheduled things that are happening, workshops in the building. Our related services teachers, while they do all are therapists, while they do all go to all three buildings. Right now, they do take students from each of the classrooms to support IEP goals and objectives for whether it be physical therapy, speech therapy, or occupational therapy. And they're not necessarily taking one student one at a time. They may take somebody from Mrs. Westcott's room, along with somebody from Mr. Wayman's room, along with somebody from Mrs. Horan's room, and work in a motor group together to build skills. So while they do visit all three buildings, having all preschools in one location allows for, allows for us to be able to extend the amount of times that we can support and sort of, doesn't limit our availability of these people. Because if you have students all over the district getting the same services, it does limit the amount of time that each of our therapists could spend with them. The teachers also can cross across the classroom group students. So that also is an added benefit to having the program in one location. We share paraprofessional support, lunch needs, dismissal, pickup, all those pieces. We are sharing paraprofessional support. And also on our, every Monday, our three teachers meet for PLCs. Rate us the day, rate us their day ends at two o'clock to begin their work, working on curriculum, looking at data, and IEP needs and special needs students and students without needs. And so that work occurs the moment the students are in the bus or in the cars and on their way. So I think those were the educational reasons we thought that the location in one, the program in one location made a lot of sense. If you look at the next three pages, the next page is just background information about our program as it is right now. There are three classrooms. Two and a half teachers. We remember that you added the additional half-classroom halftime teacher last year to our program. We have three and a half paraprofessionals. Two and a half are part of those two class, two and a half classrooms, if you want to call it that. And one is a one-to-one paraprofessional we have currently. There's an additional student joining us in February, so I did add that student into the count for right now. And that makes our count right now forty-four students. There are eight students in the preschool that have special needs. And the students are in all three towns. They're located in all three towns. So I do a breakdown of each classroom with the students, number of students, and they're, you know, where they're from, where their residence is. And also, we break down if the students are participating in half-day or the extended day program. So that's the first page.
She's.
Yes.
What groups, are they all mixed?
It's all mixed.
All three? So the two, two nine, ten month.
Yep, two nine.
It would be the four.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe read this from staff zero to room one, last room one.
Right, so there are staff children, right? The board has allowed staff children to come to our program. So there's nobody, nobody in the first classroom that is a staff child, but there are one in each room after that. I just, I wanted you to understand why the numbers didn't jive, because the other towns are not located in our region.
Okay.
Okay? The next page just talks about transportation as we call around to other districts. We learned that there are three local districts supporting what we would call our neighborhood students, right? All districts are required to transport their special needs students. That's not an option. So there are three students, Region Six, Region Twelve, and Region Fifteen, that do transport students. The other, next four listed do not transport what we would call our neighborhood students. Litchfield, New Milford, Region Fourteen, and Thomaston do not. I did a, we did a survey. Our committee decided to ask the parents how many of them would be impacted by no transportation. About eighty percent or seventy-nine percent of our families use transportation right now. Almost forty percent would not be able to attend reach, so thirty-eight percent of the students would not be able to attend reach without transportation. And if there was a cost, twenty-four percent would not, would use the busing. Only twenty-four percent would use the busing. Yes?
Could you refresh my memory? It's getting very, very, you know, slow with age.
Sure.
What are we providing now for transportation? It gets complicated with the half-day.
Yep, so half-day is actually not the complicated one. That's where we transport both ways. So if you come in to our half-day program, which is actually, well, we call it a half-day because it's a half-day, but it's truly our preschool program. The other program is our extended day. You get transportation in and transportation home.
And that's a nine to eleven?
Nine to twelve.
Nine to twelve.
Mm-hmm.
And transportation is for all children, both ways?
Both ways. If you come for the extended program, which is nine to two, you're offered transportation on the way in, but parents pick up at two.
Can you remind me again how many buses?
Three.
There.
Well, three and a piece of another one. One that makes a run from Montessori picks up a few students on the way back through a certain part of town and grabs a few other students. So three, three full, you know, three full buses and a piece of one.
Okay.
The next page is about fees. And what we found when we did the research in fees is that, again, what we talked about last year, that was that we were certainly on the lower side. Again, just as transportation is required to be given to students with special needs, preschool is required to be given to students with special needs. So there is a local district that still does not charge for their preschool, and that is Region Six. And what I've put under each of the districts is the options that they offer for their preschool. Everyone else charges, and when you look at the local districts, you'll see that our numbers at six hundred for five days a week for three hours and a thousand dollars for five days a week at five hours are much, much lower than other districts. Understanding that we were free two years ago, so that we made that sort of jump to being a cost or a fee preschool, we are on the lower side of that. So the committee did think that it would be appropriate for us to get closer to, or to begin the process of getting closer to our local districts. We thought nine hundred and fifteen hundred, as we worked out the ratios, they were proportionate. And we thought that, that it would be a hard increase to jump to something like two thousand. You know, fifteen hundred, two thousand right away, but that it was a start to move in that direction of what other local preschools are charging. With the understanding that there is still one local preschool that doesn't charge and does provide transportation one way.
Guys, if the company runs at a deficit, it probably figures in order to make an analysis of the cost. Right, the car only runs at a deficit. Does this even have the deficit or it still runs at a deficit?
Sure, it runs at a deficit.
What would you have to charge for it to break even?
I didn't do the analysis of that, Pete, but it was substantial.
Do we know what our cost per pupil is for the non-special ed?
I've not worked that out.
We didn't work that out for this analysis until we came.
And when you mentioned that you were doing a proportional, I mean, how did you?
I set up the amount of hours, so fifteen hours is to the nine hundred dollars as twenty-five hours is to the fifteen hundred.
Okay.
I just want to say, as far as costs goes, we do get a lot of added benefits from having our students in preschool. They are exposed to curriculum, you know, social skills, emotional development, physical development. At WPS, they get the specials, so the music teacher visits them, the art, the PE. So it really is a benefit to the school system, helping kids be prepared. So when they get to kindergarten, which is much more rigorous than it used to be, they're more successful.
What are the hours of our extended day kindergarten now, nine to three or nine to two?
Yeah, kindergarten goes full time.
Nine to three thirty.
Full day.
Nine to three.
Full day.
Eighteen.
Three fourteen.
Oh, okay, yeah, fifteen.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I think this all sounds great. It's a wonderful program. I, I just remember when we were trying to look at the cost for the program, and we added a bus last year, I think it was, when we added the classroom, when we added a third classroom, the bus was one additional cost. And I was wondering if you looked at or thought about having the Washington students ride the regular bus so that we could.
I didn't look at that solely because there were objections to that two years ago when we were talking about children being transported. People felt, I thought the board felt strongly that they needed to be in their separate buses, strapped in with the five-point harnesses.
Well, I, I, I know that the preschool students in Region Six ride the regular bus.
They do.
And I was wondering if we would be able to put, you know, the front two rows of the buses have five. I still think they should be at five-point harness, definitely. I just, and I didn't know, you know, maybe once you do that, it's no longer a savings. I just was wondering if that was considered or looked at. We talked about it last year, but it was too late. We'd already promised the parents, we'd already explained what the program was, and so we didn't, we weren't able to not, to do it differently. And so I didn't know if that had been looked at, because I know a bus is like forty, fifty thousand, right?
Mm-hmm, it is.
So, I mean, that's like all the tuition.
But, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't add an additional bus from last year to this.
No, we didn't. We just reutilized some of noon time, because the noon time was causing the problem. Because we had to bring in the special needs students anyway. And they're scattered throughout, and we needed the smaller buses to deal with that. So those are the buses that.
I think that when it was presented to us, when we went from two classrooms to three, we added a bus.
We had to do something at noon time is what we had to do. And then when, what we explained or what was explained is we pick up some kids, the outliers, what we call them, using that Montessori to get that handled. Handling the outliers, because that's the one that was going to cause us the problems. So we found a way to do it. Doesn't always work out, though.
Okay, so, we wouldn't be able, are you saying we wouldn't be able to drop one of the three buses if the twenty-five kids that are in Washington rode the regular?
Not where they're all located, and they're so scattered apart because you'd have them on for so long. That's the, it's the, we're fighting distance and time.
I know, I'm just thinking.
If it's doable, we'd do it.
Well.
But right now, it doesn't look feasible.
Because if there are forty-four total and twenty-five are Washington, that means you would have half the kids taken out of the pool, and you would still have two, sixty-six percent, two-thirds of the buses running. The Rock, the Rockbury Bridgewater run. So it's, it seems plausible that it could actually be faster if the.
It's possible, but we do have to still deal with the special needs students, and that's a problem.
They can't ride the regular buses.
Some are not.
All right, so if we need the buses, then we need the buses and, and, okay.
I mean, it couldn't, no matter what, the transportation plan could be modified in some way, be improved, and we'd do that. So always look at, when we, when we get a final roster and we know where we can put and place kids, what the objective is to use, number one, as few buses, but also try to watch the clock as to how long.
Oh, absolutely. But I, that's why I was thinking if those twenty-five kids, they're now potentially riding one bus, were picked up by the four that we happen to have out there picking up all the rest of our kids, their times would probably be shorter, and then the other kids would have less kids to pick up. Their times might be shorter too. But it depends on where they, I, it depends on where they live.
It actually takes longer to load one of the smaller kids than it does the bigger kids. All of the kids would end up spending more time. They are, they're more time-intensive, if you will, getting them on the bus. Their legs aren't that big.
Right, parents, parents bring them onto the bus and load them in the harness.
It takes a lot longer to do this.
Yep.
Considerable amount of time.
Well, send forgive me. I just drove six hours from DC, so my head is somewhere else. So I'm just trying to remember this conversation. But why are we so standalone in terms of like five days a week and then five hours a day? I mean, not, the other school districts do either two and a half or three hours.
Right.
And certainly, it's with the exception, and then, well, five days a week. And only Litchfield does five days a week, and that's two and a half hours. I mean, we have one long program offering. Why did we go, why are we the outlier? Why aren't we just following the pattern that had been done by our neighbors?
I think when we talked about it a few years ago, we thought how exciting it would be to be able to extend the day as kindergarten became full day just shortly before I arrived here, to extend the days and let parents choose whether they wanted their three- or four-year-old to stay for extended time. Litchfield did have a four-hour program. It's not listed any longer on their paperwork. They have a brand-new director that started today, and I haven't been able to touch base with why that's no longer an offering next year. So I think we thought that it was, we're not the only place in the state that that's happening. There are other districts. Reading has an extended day program. So I think we thought it was an exciting opportunity to have our students spend a little more time at school, and that's how we proceeded, as opposed.
A lot of them have five days.
Well, for three hours or two and a half, not, not the option of five hours. It's a big program, a long time.
Well, the board took it up.
Since you extended the day, the spots have been filled out, correct?
Sure.
So, and if that's another, if that's attracting families to the area, and it's a need that needs to be met. I mean, if you offered the five hours and they weren't being filled, then I could see why that maybe we wouldn't need it. But if it's being filled and it's a need that we're meeting, right?
Allison, are we looking for more?
I don't think so.
I think it's just, she made recommendations. We've met as a team, made some recommendations.
You know, on the other side of things, there must be, as you alluded to, there must be other districts that do even more and that are even leaning towards universal pre-K. I'm curious as to what the, what the deficit is, what the full cost is. Because it would be even better if we could, as a region, offer actual pre-K universally on a, on even longer basis in the way Region Six does it, by having it in their budget. Because, you know, we are home to school. So clearly, in our neighborhood, in our area, in our local districts, that's really not the status quo. But are there other districts, other areas in Connecticut that are on the other side of things that actually are having this part of their curriculum and therefore part of their budget? Or would be, would be, would be the outliers budgetarily from miles beyond if we even consider something like that?
Well, I didn't look into other universal pre-K, who in the state is doing a universal pre-K. So that would be in sort of another set of research. I don't have that information. But I, I mean, the preschool has been included in your budget from the very beginning, in the board budget, from the very beginning.
Oh, right, right. Just as far as that aspect, especially the special needs aspect. We were talking about the fact that this is roughly about forty-five thousand in tuition that we're asking for from the kids, parents.
Students with special needs don't pay.
Right.
And students that have met the criteria for free or reduced lunch also do not pay.
Right.
There is a scale.
But as you said, then there's still a deficit as far as what the program actually costs. So it would be interesting, because if, depending on what this is, as you pointed out, just as far as transportation, you know, forty-five thousand is like two one-hundredths of our budget. So if there's a way of expanding and covering this in our budget, that would be something that might be a forward-looking aspect of our curriculum and education here in Region Twelve. That would not only benefit all the kids, but clearly, as we're talking about tracking families. And I'm just wondering, you know, there was a little talk about this last, I don't know if it was last time or the year before, when we talked about, why do we charge it to the public? And we talked about how it's a matter, a lot of it is having peers for the special ed kids in that program and to be able to sustain their participation as peers. But then I'm just wondering, if we want to keep our minds open and our eyes open as we go through this budget season, to think about what it would mean to actually bring this into fully into our budget, not charge parents at all, and even look to expanding it to having, you know, universal pre-K for, for all, for all students in Region Twelve, for all families.
Okay, please, answer, and see you soon, Cheryl.
Oh, I would just say that I, I personally love that idea, and I would, I would try to do that. But I feel that because we are educating beyond the state mandate, this isn't required, having some sort of nominal fee sort of, I feel that it's, it's almost a peer. It helps us with the communication of going beyond our mandate to our population. If there was an outcry from our taxpayers saying, why are we charging? Then it would be really easy, but I feel like this sort of strikes a little bit of balance. It's nominal. It doesn't really cover the cost, but because we're exceeding our mandate, it's showing that, you know, these parents are contributing because we're going above and beyond. They're getting a lot more than what they're paying for. I, I, I think it's like, it's an education. I think it's sort of an appeasement for those who would rather us not exceed the mandate by the state of only students with special needs.
I'm sure.
Well, we don't know the cost of this program. We can say that there are two and a half professionals, there are certified teachers, two and a half, who are special ed certified. I'm assuming you're talking at, I don't know, about a hundred and fifty thousand easy, plus the two and a half paraprofessionals, plus the three buses. Classrooms, no charge, of course. Supplies, fairly nominal, but there is a cost. So I would, I would like to see the cost per pupil, and then if you take away the forty-five thousand and whatever they're going to be doing in terms of a fee, then see if we can add on a program. But I do think it's very important for the board to think about responsibility of the taxpayer. We just had one hell of a big referendum, and the taxpayer thankfully agreed with us, but they're going to have to be educated about how this is going to look at budget tone. And adding on something that I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this has to be a quarter of a million dollar program. Right?
Won't get you the numbers, I'll get you all the numbers.
Then to say, let's keep it or expand it without fee, I, you know, I think we just have to be sensitive. I mean, the way it's constructed now is very much a bargain when you look at the other districts. It's still a bargain even with the, the nominal increase that we're having, so I just think we have to be very careful with our taxpayers, that's all.
I just, I just, I totally agree, I mean, but I guess what I'm looking at is the fact that very often, depending on the circumstances, our, our taxpayers are used to us going beyond our state mandates. We have credits required to graduate than, um, the state mandates, we have a longer school year than the state mandates. So I think when in terms, when we're doing that in terms of, of our, the opportunities we offer our kids, um, you're right, in any circumstances, it's always, you have to finesse it to them when you're sending the taxpayers a big bill. Yet on the other, other side of things, when we have the chance to, um, to go beyond the mandate in a very important way, we have to consider both sides and I think we should look into that this year.
But having said that, in twenty-seventeen or thereabouts, when we have a million dollar debt payment, when our debt, when our bond hits us for that first crucial year and that our program, the AgriScience program, isn't fully subscribed, you know, we just have to be very careful. Whether it's this program or any other, just to tamp down a little bit, to, to help our taxpayers get used to their new normal.
Alright, well, it's certainly, I mean, it's always worth looking at and making an educated decision and having information as to what it would cost as part of our budget process then. Michelle.
Um, I would just ask Ally maybe if you could let us know if you feel that there are any children out there who are, have not or would not be able to participate because of the tuition? And we, you, you know, just because you don't qualify for assistance doesn't mean that this is necessarily in your budget, you might just barely miss it, and I don't know if we could even have a sliding, I, I, it, you know, I, I, the, understanding if the fee was inhibiting anyone would, I think, be useful in that conversation when budget time comes. So I don't, I mean, you don't have to run a survey, but you might happen to know if there are kids out there that come to open house and then don't register, we could maybe follow up or something.
I can, certainly.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not really privy to that piece.
Okay.
Of people's situation.
Anything else?
Thanks, Ally.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, the next part of the report is, um, just prepared by Peter Prada, the public school enrollment projection. Bob, I don't know if you want to say something on that.
Very important, under the state, it's a summer report. Uh, what it shows is a continuation of the decline in enrollment. This year we ended, we are, we have seven twenty-eight, it's projected to go to six hundred and ninety students for the next school year, which is a decline of another thirty-eight students. For where we, where we are on October first. By the, uh, the projection, he, when he does his projection, he takes into account many more things than just the percentage of persistence. If you, if you were to look on page fourteen, for example, and I just call it to your attention, he's using eleven more factors that he goes out and gathers data on. And it's the second paragraph on page fourteen, and you can see he's looking at housing starts, he's looking at the overall town population and the direction that's going. He's looking at new construction permits to develop his projections. He's looking at the high school dropout rates in, in this as well. So even after he takes into account all the eleven other areas that he's looking into, the decline still looks, this outward migration is what it's called. More student, less students in, more students leaving the system in person. Goes through the system pretty, pretty consistently. When, when I looked at all of the data, all of the schools continued to decline with, uh, by the time we reached the twenty-twenty-five, which is the last year of this projection, which is the ending of the projection, all of the schools declined in enrollment by a hundred and fifty-four students. Does that take into account the AgriScience at this point in time? None, none of the AgriScience is factored in here, it's just what we've been used to looking at. And the only place where we see any increase in enrollment is in Washington. Washington primary actually in a ten-year period picks up five students by the end of the period. Burnham has, is decreased by eleven. Uh, Booth Free in Roxbury is down by sixteen and Shephard loses a hundred and thirty-two because they're working their way through here until we get to the new low point again. And there's nothing that indicates any increase in, in enrollment other than what we've already identified as the influx of the AgriScience students. Thank you.
You say, Bob, though, it does appear at the end of the, of the twenty-four, twenty-five period that we're getting a little bit of, it appears that they, that it's leveled out by twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And then it's actually starting to recover at the elementary level. Now, it's not obviously up to the level where it is in twenty fifteen, but it's, it's heading in the right direction again, it's recovering enough uh, so that unfortunately you don't see that for another few years make its way through the middle school or to the high school. But if you were to, if, at this rate, if this, if this continues to start to recover a little bit, if you go out to twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, in that period of time, you're going to see the high school numbers start to recover a little bit as those children make their way through. So the takeaway from the report is we appear to be, if Dr. Prada is correct, we appear to be looking at the bottom as opposed to constantly looking at the decline.
Yeah, his, his, his accuracy has been very good, uh, for the reports that we have gotten in. Uh, we're different in this particular, if you looked at last year's report, he had projected seven hundred and fourteen students. We ended up actually with seven hundred and twenty-eight students this Octo, past October one. The fourteen students are however made up of students from staff, there was more than we had before. It was two additional Sherman students that were higher than what he had in the past. Four students came into us from Milford that were unanticipated when the projection was done. That's where your fourteen difference is. Yes, I'm sorry. You know? Yeah, but.
I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, the policy that, um, we changed in terms of our tuition and policy is, is at least a year old now, I'm wondering if, did he take that into account at all when he was doing the projection?
Yeah, because it picks up the non-resident population in addition to your resident population.
Okay.
It incorporates everybody that's sitting in a seat in Region Fourteen, or Region Twelve.
So, and did he, did he project that as a, a flat?
Yes, he did, because he projected it flat out, uh, for where it was right now, even though Sherman is declining.
Right.
In their general population, he's tempered that down to a number between eighteen and nineteen as you look out into the years from the twenty.
So the biggest anticipated growth, um, which would be the AgSTEM program change is the, is, is the only factor that you really seem not addressing.
Right, we, we chose not to do that until we get here because it was so close to where we wanted to get this for budgetary purposes and it would impact the budget that we're working on. Peter?
I was wondering, um, from my vantage point, the towns are really not doing anything about increasing population in the parental community. And, uh, I don't know where we want to be in that equation. Do we want to make an effort to start with pressure on these towns from our vantage point that continuing without a plan in these three towns is detrimental to the public educational system? I mean, at what point do we step in and request what kind of plans do you have for the future for health?
Peter.
What kind of plans do you have to zone, etc., etc.?
My thought is that we're appointed here to run the education plan in the towns of the region. And whatever consequences that may be by our exercise of authority in running the district, it's best that we know how. You know, it has the side consequences of attracting families to communities. I mean, that we need to get involved in the town, you know, the town's policy.
What do our, how do we do that, is it?
I don't think we need to announce a policy about that.
Well, I'm not saying any policy, but to come up with some concepts that if you sit here and work.
I don't think we need to get into that area.
Ten years, you're going to have budgetary problems, you're going to have work-related problems as the population keeps sinking. You can only be creative to such a degree. Now, board members may not want to enter it into a venture like this, maybe they could say, well, listen, you come from this town, I come from that town, do it on your own at your town meetings, etc., etc.
Well, if anybody wants to be heard on that, they can, sure.
Well, I agree, I mean, there's not much we can do to help the, the towns, and frankly, the towns are stuck. I mean, you know, with zoning, yes it is, but, but once again, it gets back to our reach presentation. Um, we have such a wonderful opportunity here. If you look at, I, I think it's page ten, I'm sorry, of the report itself, page seven, as a good for instance, Booth Free School enrollment. In twenty fifteen, there were thirteen Roxbury pre-kindergarten children in the district's program. I mean, it, it just seems to me, well, we're talking Reach, taking that part of the district, those two schools, they're running such a huge deficit of population. There are twenty-three preschool kids that would be part of the W, uh, W, uh, Washington Primary School. So there are thirteen kids and a handful of kids from Booth, uh, from, uh, Burnham, but thirteen kids in the pre-K program that live in Roxbury. I mean, if we had that pre-K program established at Booth, at Burnham, that, those neighboring towns, Southbury, Woodbury, um, uh, Brookfield, people might say, I'm going to send my kid to that school because they have an excellent pre-K, nominal cost, and we can make it nominal also, tuitioning in kids, and then want those kids to stay in those elementary schools and use those empty facilities. I mean, I, I just don't know why we're so bound and I understand the arguments that it was easier for the Reach group to give some services and to use some equipment. But gee, wouldn't it be great to have outposts of Reach in the two elementary schools that would really be beating up and encouraging the population? That to me is a tool the Board of Ed can use. We can't change zoning, we can't have affordable housing, it's not our purview. But to have programs that reach into the communities, the surrounding communities, and have them look at Region Twelve differently is something we could do. I just think we're missing a great opportunity.
Well, are the committee recommended, not recommended?
I know, because it's easy.
I don't think I'm against that, but I, I think.
It's easy to keep it in the location, I know that.
I'm not entirely against it.
But I think it's, it's an extension, literally a Reach into our other two towns.
Alright. Anyone else? Yes?
At this point, um, do the surrounding towns' families have access to our Reach program? Can kids from Brookfield be sent to Reach?
Yes.
They have a tuition in.
Is the tuition the same for Region Twelve students as it is for other towns?
I don't have the exact number, but it's a percentage of the out-of-town tuition that, um, the other kids pay.
It's the same policy for the K twelve.
It's the same policy, yes, that we put in.
We have some students. Just provide nothing for them, they would have to be, you know.
No, they, or own, own transportation.
But it is.
Yeah.
I'm not being asked to do anything.
No, I was, I was on my way.
Just to follow up on your question though, um, I know one of the recent presentations that Ally made to the board, sh, sh, it seemed that, that the Reach capacity was, was at capacity. In other words, I'm, I'm not sure how, um, much Ally is going to surrounding districts saying, we have this fabulous program at Reach here, because it seems like internally we're, we're able to fill all the slots and then some. So I'm just wondering if the committee has ever really looked at growing capacity for Reach, growing it into an even larger program that it already is.
We definitely didn't at this juncture, also because looking at the info, all of the surrounding towns have programs that are, you know, well attended and, you know, less hours that are functioning fine, um, like Southbury and Brookfield. Like they, they all have their own in Reach, uh, Reach Two.
Okay.
So, like, we're not, I don't think we're going to fish in their pond. They're, they're running their own programs, we looked at a lot of them, so. I mean, it would be an interesting idea, we can look at it further, but right now we didn't have the existing space that would be necessary in either of the other two buildings and it's functioning extremely well where it is now. So it, it just didn't make a lot of sense, so.
Um, getting back to Prada's report, I think I was looking towards the end, of course, my machine is locked up now. Towards the end where he, a, as usual, very often, um, remarks on how what he really goes by are precedent and history. And that, that the, um, it's based on observed data from the recent past and its key assumption is that those conditions will persist. And he's phrased it differently in the past, but what he generally means is if something climactic, uh, climatic changes, I can't even talk today, um, something big happens. Flatter matter. I did, something big happens, um, whether it's economical, whether it's economic, whether it's state, whether it's local, whether it's region, obviously, it will change everything severely. And I think, you know, we kind of touched on this, we're saying, well, was AgSTEM part of this? No, it wasn't, but imagine how in future years, um, whether he will do it next year without any actual program in place or at least for the next couple of years, we're going to see how that is an outside force which is changing the region, which will allow him to reconfigure some of this, this, um, these predictions he has. And so I think we've, we've taken a step as a board to do something which is to obviously, yeah, embark on the AgSTEM project, which is going to help us try to turn this tide. And, and my concepts of, of universal pre-K are, are similar things, I mean, feeding the population and feeding the eggs to make us able to, to populate it properly. Um, but these are the things we can do, um, educationally to provide for our children more, but also to be more attractive to people who might be considering moving here, who might be considering not moving here. Um, and along those lines, I, 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 I do kind of agree with, with Jim that it's not necessarily our, um, position to throw up our hands in despair at the twinned population and say, well, the towns aren't doing anything, so, there you go. I think we have to deal with the cards that were dealt and then also try to, um, manipulate that as best as possible. And on the other side of my hat-wearing, I know our first selectman and, um, our marketing person sent an email to Pat detailing all the stuff our town is doing for our population. Uh, I believe a little more on the, um, on the marketing side and on the program side, rather than the zoning side. We are in the middle of a heated zoning battle with our, our planning and zoning, because as you know, several years ago, we upzoned. You know, we're considering, will we backzone or will we start, uh, changing things such as our planning and zoning regs to allow for clustered housing where it's possible to plan? As we've been around in this table before, we have a water issue in which we're finding we have, uh, water. So we were heatedly doing that and so, you know, maybe for the benefit of, of, of people like we, we could have a little bit of a report to the boards, you know. I mean, I, I guess I know Curtis did, maybe Barbara will or has, or maybe Mark will or had. Um, just so we all know, we're in this together, remember we're in this together and not feel like it's on our shoulders to keep our school population alive.
That's a good point. Sure.
Well, to follow along with what Alan's saying, if you look at the page eighteen, Dr. Prada's predictions that he's made and you look at two thousand and fifteen and that slight little revision upward and the uptick from previous years, I know it's just small and, and one year does not make a new trend, but I feel that all of the things that you're talking about that the towns have done and that we have done with expanding our Reach, with the tuition reduction, just a couple kids here and there, we, it, it has, has changed the pattern of the line. And maybe the, if we continue to do these little things that we're trying to do, we can have a little more impact on that line. If you look at WPS. If you look at WPS, by the end of the prediction, we're actually back to the, I think it was like 2009 enrollment, a hundred and sixty-nine kids, way above, well above where we're anticipated, where we are now and where we're anticipated to be. So, so it's too early to declare anything, I think, as success, but we've seen a little movement, and I think we should acknowledge that, celebrate it, and continue with tweaking our, our things, because, you know, one more family coming in because of our preschool program, three more kids coming in because of our tuition, two more coming in from this, and all of a sudden, that's ten, that, that, that moves the line. So, I think there's, I would, I, I look at this, and I'm optimistic, I'm not, I don't think we've solved the problem, but I think we've seen a little movement, and we should acknowledge that.
I agree. I was just gonna say that, I, you really have to go to some of the builders' Christmas parties in Rockville, which is what I did this year, and I, I had a lot of conversations with different builders, and, and the one thing I will tell you is, the problem is not that the selectmen or the towns are not doing anything, the problem is what can they do? If, if you want to have what we consider affordable houses in most of these towns, which is houses of $250,000, in order, what it costs per square foot to build one of these houses, if you can get the lot, if you reduce the lots, the half acre lots or quarter acre lots, and you can get them for $50,000 apiece, you can put an 1,100 square foot house on there and sell it for $250,000. In fact, the matter is, people don't want 1,100 square foot houses, they want larger houses, they want 1,700 square foot or 1,800 square foot houses, but they want it for the same price. And the only way to do that is you've got to have the land come for free from the developer and the subsidy from the government in order to make a 1,700 square foot house for $250,000. What we want is mission impossible, so what I think we should do as a Board of Education is we should continue to provide the best schools we can within what's reasonable to pay, and we should stop trying to think that there's gonna be a savior riding in with the selectmen, just figure out how to get small enough lots. Unless you're gonna start building high-rise buildings and attract people that way, you flat out aren't gonna solve the housing problem in these towns, and you aren't gonna have affordable housing. We should stop kidding ourselves waiting for that ship. Let's just make great schools and hope that we will continue to get a reasonable number of people come in, and with any luck, this will be the place to be, and I, I think, you know, this is what we should do.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, Michelle, what I'd like to do for Michelle's community is appreciate the, the trust, but.
Can you go to new business? We've been a whole business. Anybody object to that, sort of shuffle the tables through policies?
Yeah, we have to have, we have video reports, do you worry that?
I'm sorry?
Because of the new year, we haven't even had, we're gonna skip to video reports.
No, no, we can go back and do them, but she needs to.
Okay.
Let's do item eight, new business, eight point one, first reading policy five, one one three.
Thank you all very much, I really appreciate that. All right, so, five one one three, attendance, excuses dismissed. If you look in the packet that was sent to you, you will find, let me find it here. What we did is we gave you the CAPE version that we're proposing moving to, we gave you the old version, the, the version that region twelve has in the handbook, and then a list called five one one three comparisons. We did this because there were just enough significant changes that trying to mark up the policy, it would've, it would've been a mess trying to figure out what was highlighted, the wording was just so different. When we look at this as a committee, if we see such significant changes, and, and it seems best to take the CAPE's new policy wholesale, we do that knowing that the policy they've sent to us has, has been read by their lawyers, meets the new state requirements and the state laws, and it, we just feel as a committee it's best to go with the new version. But we want you to see what our current policy is, and, and I have to thank Teresa and Sue Haverley for putting together a nice list of comparisons. So what they did is went through, matched them up, and kinda highlighted where the differences were. This, this law's, or this policy is coming to us because there was a, a new law passed, so this is required policy. And if you just look at the list of comparisons, you can see the highlights of what, what is different. I, I'm not gonna highlight any of the differences, one over, over the other, there's a list.
Motion to adjourn to this policy for first reading?
We adopt her first reading. Again.
All right, the second panel. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The hip's name, say the passage you mean, is eight point two, first reading.
Wow, okay.
Five one four, one point four, reporting child abuse and neglect and sexual assault.
Okay, so, we did the exact same with this one. There's a new law that was passed requiring this new reporting, and the new policy that was given to us was significantly different enough from our old policy that we both have been presented to you, and, and the cha, the, the changes or the new, new, yeah, changes, I guess, are listed in the document called comparisons, so.
I think it's significant, first one, that all school employees are mandated reporters on the first reading, should be, that's, that's not what it's gonna.
Yes, it is, and that is, that is probably the biggest part of this, and then that was stipulated in the law. So you'll see there's some smaller changes about how many hours you have to report, and under the age of eighteen, and actually, the, the sexual assault portion is also new and expanded in this versus the old. But yeah, the fact that all school employees.
All right, is there a motion that you'd like to, five one one?
So, I guess, to adopt this first reading. Second.
I just have a question. I may have missed it, but in this policy, the CAPE version, is there any reference to the guidance regarding training of staff in regards to how to identify support? Because that's a significant burden that we're putting on a population that has previously not been required to work in these that way.
Yes, so, and correct me, we were talking about this in committee with, with Teresa, who, who's in charge of the professional development, and there will be training, and there is mandated, mandatory training on this. What we do usually as a committee, though, is anything that, because CAPE usually gives us several versions of the law, and we will usually choose the one that has the most leeway for administration, that is the least prescriptive, so we leave it to them to, to make sure that that training happens and that it is, it meets the requirements, but without just prescribing it or, because if it starts going into regulations, things that are, that the administration can determine without us, we try not to put it in the policy because those are often changing, and then we'd be doing policy forever. So, so yes, they do have to do professional development, there is a, a, there are recommended professional development requirements for this, and they're where.
Says the district must provide in service regarding requirements, obligations, mandated reporters, as well as training staff, and.
Yeah, no, so they have to, they have to, but the, it doesn't spell, the, the policy, it just says that we're required to train, but doesn't exactly say how. And Teresa is aware of what it is, the, you know, the minimum requirement. There are actually, it turns out, companies out there that, that help with this, that produce videos and, and literature, and, because the whole state has to do it, so, so it's not as daunting to put some training together as it might sound, although it is a lot of time being required of our teachers.
I, I think, two things that we talked about, in terms of flexibility, there is a recognition on the state level even that someone who's been trained might not have to go through the same level, the amount of training a second time around, or there's a time around, so that, that gives us a little bit more flexibility. But I think your, your concern is a good one to voice, maybe superintendent, to the state, because it seems that every year there are more and more mandated, required training sessions for, for all staff, and after a while, you have to wonder how that's gonna impact what our primary mission is as educators.
That was a concern that Teresa was also aware, the note is also on here, there's the establishment of rapid response teams, which is something new, and even in our committee, Teresa said, oh boy, you have so many teams now, for all of these different requirements. So, they're well aware of how you have to have this kind of very closely nestled bent diagram now of what teams everyone's on, and how they invest the, how they can best fulfill the mandates and the requirements without having all the time to go for these responsibilities.
All right, thank you. Michelle, call it, do you want to go with the seven, or?
Oh, what, we did, did we, we didn't vote on it?
Just eight two, yes, I did. Eight two, password for three.
Oh, excellent. That's been reading.
Seven one, second reading, five one one eight three.
Sure, I'll tell them.
Wait, I'm sorry. Move it, we seconded policy five one one eight point three for a second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we move to second, are there any further discussions?
I didn't have time for that yet, did we actually vote on that?
Yeah, I didn't think we voted on the second one.
We, we seconded, we motioned seconded, but we never actually voted.
All right, so, well, we did. All right, and let's go back to, I'm sorry, we'll stop where we are, go back to eight point two, six, eight four, one point four, quoting child abuse and neglect and sexual assaults, we move to second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any fellows?
Thank you. That's what I thought.
All right, to that, back out to five one one eight point three, non-resident attendants, we move for a second reading, move to second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any fellows? We understand. Second reading, five one three, one point six, alcohol, used drugs, and tobacco, who are performance enhancing substances. Uh, sorry. Michelle, do you want to have anything else?
Um, this is a second reading, it is the same as it was presented in our first one, and the performance enhancing substances, let's see, the two major highlights were the addition of all of the, what they could, the.
Nicotine delivery devices.
Thank you, delivery devices, I'm like, what is that word? The nicor, nicotine delivery devices and medical use of marijuana, was tacked on at the end, those were the two major differences.
Is there a motion to a report for a second reading? Is there a motion?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any more questions for second?
Second.
Michelle, seconds. Any further discussion?
Second, no, Sidney.
Oh, Sidney, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Three seconds, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? Right of passage, the last, the second reading of policy five one four four point one, use of physical force. Is there a motion to a report for a second reading? Back out to this.
Second.
All right, the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same thing.
Thank you. Is it done? Yeah. No more voting outside.
All right, I'm to, uh, go back, six, two minutes, neuroscience steering and a model was on the present, is there anyone who has anything to say? Does anybody really have anything to say? Is there anyone who wants to report anything to the board? You don't have any? Okay, science. All right. Uh, I can say that we're in the process of selecting a building committee.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, were you on excite?
We want committee reports, excite steering.
Right, excite steering has nothing to do with building committees. Excite steering is on the, the basis program itself.
All right.
On the facilities, we can't be happy to talk about building committees.
All right, well, next is education. Michelle, do you want to report? Do you have more to report?
I believe I'm presenting on the CAPE, um, couple of things that we learned on, at the CAPE convention, is there something else that we need to know?
Yeah, we have a couple of things, I'm trying to think of other things. Um, I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but Teresa is presenting on the new assessments, especially the SAT.
Oh, right, right.
And I believe Lainey, who runs the ACE program at Burnham, is supposed to come, but I have to confirm that for five minutes just to tell you how it's done.
We don't have anybody more to answer. I'm sorry, Matt.
Could I just ask a question for, uh, Pat? I know that there's been a lot of talk in the, in the newspapers about the, the new regionalization of our schedule, all, all schools, and I know you were quoted in the paper about that.
Yes.
Maybe you could just at some point give us a quick summary of how that might impact us if at all for the future?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it really, I think we talked about it, I think it's last year at this point, it, it changed a couple of our PD days because we have to have the same PD days as the regional calendar, and we are with the Litchfield and the Western Group, so we're a big, like, egg connection region. So, next year, we will have the Friday before Columbus Day as a PD day, and we will have Election Day as a PD day, which means professional development, students will be off, kids will be in school. We're keeping with, teachers, thank you, we are keeping with Veterans Day as a holiday here because it was really very challenging with all of the different contracts, so we just figured we'd keep that. And then because there's flexibility, and you can either add or take away three or four days, is it three or five?
Three at the beginning.
Three at the beginning, you have a little flexibility. So we were able to begin the beginning of the year on a Monday, which is what you liked with students, so we're really okay with it. I think it will help us with professional development opportunities, especially thinking about bringing in speakers, maybe on the SAT or the Common Core, it helps when we think about our art teachers, our, our specialty teachers, music, PE, so they can get together with other people and staff members in those disciplines from other districts. So I think we're okay with it, I really do.
Does it affect our start date?
No, we changed our start date. It originally affected our start date, we had to start on a Wednesday, but then they put in this caveat that you could start three days before or after that start date, so we gave you the flexibility, so we were able to move it to a Monday, so we're good. I can, we'll have Debbie send you the calendar for next year, so that you have it, and we'll put on upcoming agenda, because we'll eventually be working on the calendar for the following year, which they're working on now.
So there's no, I know some of the districts that were complaining about it, were, were complaining about holidays that they were forced to either have school or not have school, and I don't know if that was the case for us at all.
It, it wasn't because, the only issue that we had was the Veterans Day, and we decided we were gonna keep that and take it off. You know, there were some school districts, they didn't like the Friday before Columbus Day, that's not their normal day, and, you know, when you're working with all of these groups, there must be about thirty districts, school districts, you have to kinda go with the flow and say, okay, this will work with us, for us, and have some compromise. I can tell you that parents like it, especially when they like work in one town and they live in another town, so that they have the same spring break, they have the same, you know, holiday break in the winter, because it's very difficult for our parents if you, you know, especially the April break, you're off the second week in April, and then your student, your children are off the third week in April, and now you have a childcare issue, et cetera. So, we're okay. We're okay.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Facilities, Greg.
Okay, well, we're obviously very busy in facilities, we're in the process, I, I've met with all the selectmen in terms of trying to come up with an appropriate building committee, and so we're in that process, that's ongoing, I'm speaking with people now that have recommended this, and I hope to have something, Jim, for you, so you can be in a position to, to go into a formal building, so that process is ongoing. Fortunately, we had to take a little break before we could just spend all the holidays, and that itself, and for some reason, we couldn't, we couldn't get anyone to focus on anything from about the eighteen on, and it just went right in.
Yes, that happens.
In there, so here we are. So, so we expect to have that to you shortly. As you can see, we have made a great start on Chippod's coming back.
Um, as you can see, we have made a great start on, Shapod's coming back with the law. Uh, I think it turned out about as well as any of us on the facilities committee could imagine when we started looking at this. Um, the other thing is, is we have, we, we've also taken money off of our capital needs because there was a substantial amount of money in the capital needs for the bar metal concerns should we have done in that area, which we didn't have to do and didn't have to get into. So the net effect there is, is that there's money that we otherwise could have thought about spending in the future that we're not gonna have to spend now as a result of that. Paint goes a long way and what they did with the ceiling was just a miracle. Uh, and I think it, I think it really looks terrific. Uh, I will tell you unfortunately though, that we are officially over budgeted this, um, project and we have not finished it. Uh, we've got, we're going to have to postpone the acquisition of the security booths and furniture and, uh, a couple of the other things, um, that we had, we had hoped to do. And part of that, um, is simply because the furniture proportions are a lot more expensive than we anticipated, more than twice what we expected, based on our initial budget. Part of the problem is that they never bought that kind of furniture. And so it's very difficult to figure out what it's gonna ultimately cost. Um, but I will tell you that the flooring came in right when we expected. Um, and at about, a little bit less than half the cost of repairing and replacing what was there we had elected to keep the kind of floor we had. I don't think any of the things, we should go back to that. Uh, so the bottom line is, we're about ten thousand over budget. We were about seventeen thousand over budget, or sixteen thousand over budget, but we received a sixty-two hundred dollar, uh, grant, credit, from the utility, uh, Eversource because of the efficient lighting that we installed in there. The lighting that's in there, uh, basically is using about half or less the electricity that was being used on the previous light that was in there. Uh, and it's much more effective lighting. Uh, and, uh, I think that we did a little bit more expensive than we expected on our design assistance, but I think the design assistance was well, money well spent. Uh, the colors, the way things are, are going to do very well. So, bottom line is, we're going to, we want to acquire the additional furniture, we're going to want to acquire the TV monitors we have hopefully placed in there. And, uh, and to finish the project, but I think that that's something that probably we'll have to wait until this spring to see how much it goes, if we've got a few dollars to share to do that. So I think that once we have this project underway, you can get a pretty good idea of what this school building will look like uh, when it is brought up to the current speed. The other nice thing is we've done the expensive piece. The expensive piece, you do, if, if we wanted to bring every hallway in the building up, we've done the expensive piece. That's the piece with the furniture, and that was the most expensive component in the entire project. The single most expensive component was the furniture. It was about fifty percent again as much as the flooring. So, we've now done the expensive piece, the rest will be done, the barbore, the square foot cost, uh, for everything else that has to be done. And then you can have it go as it looks like in drawings in the first century. Anyway, the facilities committee will continue to work on that, work with, uh, with Bob to make sure that we have the funds to complete the project where we have to. One piece out there that's missing, that's coming, uh, are the electrification of the, uh, charging station areas. Those are the seats that are against the wall. Uh, Don found a better strip than the one he originally was gonna purchase and had to order. So as soon as that comes in, we will, uh, we will complete that piece of the launch. So that's, that's a, a process. Now, here's something that we're gonna have to pay very close attention to, Pat, you're gonna have to work with your staff on this. Um, I don't wanna see anything else come back into that wall that was here before without it coming to the source. I want our designers and, uh, I mean, if we just take everything that used to be there and put it back, it's not gonna look like it does.
No, how?
No, but.
Well, no, the, we're, the only thing at this point that we have to really get back in there are the frames. Um, and they're black and they'll fit, and, uh, we'll talk to the interior designer, she knows about that. And then, as I said, the facilities, uh, facilities meeting, the plant, the living plant wall guy is going to come to see if you're already seeing that.
We're gonna look at those things, but I think what we wanna do is, we wanna avoid the creep of things back into the wall that we went to, to basically take away from what is.
Right. We're all on the same page.
We're cheating, so I just.
We're all on the same page.
All right, any questions for Greg? Thanks, thank you, Greg. Financial, are you?
We met just prior to this, um, we went over the, uh, financials, uh, December twenty-ninth, in which there is a four point four percent, sorry, uh, surplus, which tracks according to this time last year, nine hundred forty-four thousand and change. We went over all the individual objects and found nothing of concern or particularly outstanding. Um, there was some conversation about locking in maybe for two years on fuel, uh, costs, that Bob might lead us, um, through his consortiums. Two years out could be kind of interesting to see, but nothing specific yet. We will meet, uh, with Charles Heaven, um, who just completed our audit and go over the audit. It'll be presented to you on the June twenty-fifth meeting, at which time hopefully we will vote to send to the three towns a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars, which is basically the tuition money, the monies due to the towns. Um, Bridgewater gets thirty thousand and change, Roxbury forty-five, Washington sixty-three thousand. But you'll get that detail on January twenty-fifth. And we then.
January twenty?
Yes. Um, and that would bring us to, um, the, the point six four percent of the budget, uh, is the fund balance. We have a history going back to nineteen seventy-eight of all the projected and actual expenditures, um, and, uh, income and how we ended up the year, and we're tracking beautifully. And, um, once again, you'll see the, the finished audit on the twenty-fifth. The other thing we talked about is, um, we're going to schedule budget meetings, the board of finance, uh, the, I'm sorry, the finance committee, with the administrators, with the CEO, with the superintendent from above, uh, February eighteenth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth. And, uh, duh, 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 the presentation of the, uh, budget should be February.
March seventh.
No, I'm sorry, March seventh. And then we had this interesting conversation about in the future, how to show specific areas of our program and their relative costs. So an operating budget now that gives us all total numbers, we can get some ideas of special ed and other programs. So we're talking about that, and it's called an aggregate spending, which actually is now on our website for twenty fourteen, who knew? So going forward, particularly with the new way we're going to present the towns, our, with our gross budget, there's gonna be an education curve, because it's gonna be a big, big number, and it will not show the state grants. Um, so, it's gonna be very good to be more specific, how much is the middle high school costing us? How much the elementary schools, not just as an addendum to the operating budget, but really part of it. So, that's already starting this aggregate, um, uh, spending budget, which is actually on our website. So we're all excited about that, or as excited as we could be on the budget committee. Um, and that is, and we're gonna, yeah, our budget meetings, and we're also gonna have a yearly meeting with those horrible pension people that handle our pension plan now. And that is it, I believe.
All right, thank you very much, all right, so you have all of that in DC for that?
Pardon?
Do you have all of that in DC for that?
That is devotion.
Yes, it is.
Or insanity, I don't know.
I knew you wouldn't miss the meeting. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, all right. Appreciate it. While we're explaining, Alan, maybe?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna meet on the twenty-fifth, um, it's TBA at the moment, simply to decide whether if you might have started with the committee, to, to make it a, 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 because of how they, they, they.
Okay. Obviously, I haven't been out of, of, of.
Okay, good.
Negotiations, do you have any to report? We're not in the negotiations, personal. And you heard from Michelle, policies, finals? So what's prepared?
Somebody said so, uh, man, I think.
All right, so Greg, thank you, so. All those in favor say aye.